Counsel, Finance Committee meeting to order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims?
Stand by. We're experiencing technical difficulties. Ah, thank you. Your Honor, I'd make a motion for consideration claims to be paid in the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. Manual checks in the amount of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Payroll liabilities for August 4th, 2017, in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents, for a total of four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand two-hundred-and-ninety dollars and thirty-three cents.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Does anyone have any questions? None?
No.
Okay, neither do I. You guys have been doing awesome. We don't have anything. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Yes, I do have an announce, but we are going to have Mrs. Harris begin attending Finance Committee meetings and regular council meetings. With her will come reports. So if you have a question about any project, or you want to question where we are in a project, or where a line item is, she's going to have an expert report, revenue report, cash report, and that will be available to you every single meeting, and feel free to ask her questions, because it's her job to know the answer.
She's very good at it.
She's very good at it, so we're happy to have her begin attending meetings with us.
Okay, perfect. Then, seeing no other business, all adjourn at 6:47.
Hancock lead us in the pledge of allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Peterson will offer an indication.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our loving Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity we have to gather tonight as servants of this great city that we call home. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to be entrusted with the affairs and the matters which go forth. We ask you to please open our minds and soften our hearts, and be able to have good discussion and be able to come up with the right choices that will continue to lead us forward. We ask you to please bless those that are not with us tonight, that they will be able to be safe in their travels, and we ask these saints, name our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Councilman John Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Mayor John Baker. I am present, declare, and would entertain a motion to excuse Kyle Larson from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I declare that we do have quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as presented.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Go ahead, George.
My name is George Wright, and I live on Prairie Road, here in town. Matt Wright's my son, who had a little bit to do with building the skate park. I'm here to make a, I don't know if suggestion's the right word, we're gonna have lights on Friday night, as usual, for a little skating till about eleven o'clock. And I was wondering, with all the activity of the eclipse, and if Chief Murphy, or someone, if you wanna consider the lights being on on Saturday night and Sunday night, it might help the police do their spot checks, and light is better than darkness, and so it's just a suggestion that Matt and I were talking about, if you wanna sample that, or think about it, and see what kinda action we got over there. And, lights will be on Friday, as usual, and if somebody wanted to go by and just see how it kinda, kinda helps light up the park just a little bit, and anyway, that's just a thought that you might think about, if somebody could give me a call, we can make sure that lights could be left on, they could be on all night, for that matter. We'll, we'll stand the cost of the power, and so no obligation to the city if wanted to have the lights on. Okay?
Thank you, George. So, Chief Murphy, you've got that?
Your Honor, I do. Your Honor, may I ask a question?
Sure.
George, are you, so are you expecting that the kids are also gonna be skating on Saturday and Sunday night?
Yeah, they, they normally do on, when, on Friday, and there'll probably be some skaters, if the lights are on, they'll be there, as they've been.
Your Honor, we have no issue with that. Those kids have been fantastic. We've never had any issues with them. I'm in complete support of it.
Good, fine, thank you. Okay? Next.
I'm Ray Applehans, live down on West Monroe, just across from the new school, catty corner from the new school down there. We have a big weed problem down there, and I don't know whether it's the city property or the county, but I thought I'd hit here first, when I wanna congratulate Mr. Murphy on his appointment. Anyway, there's fox tail down there, and it's blowing all over our property, every little nook and cranny in the yard, around the house, around the flowers, around the garden, and there's Canadian thistle, there's just about every kind of weed down there that's noxious weed in the state of Wyoming. Kosha, well, that's not a noxious, but it should be, but there's, Mr. Baker knows all about the weeds. But anyway, I was wondering if there's some kind of a law, or a rule, or whatever, that they could take care of the weeds, if it's city property? It's, there's, there's a lot of weeds down there on, on West Monroe, where the school, from the school on down to the fence, and also up to Adams Street, going north. And, it's creating a big problem down for us, because there's, there's no trees or anything around our place, because it's a new, pretty new development, and so we get all the wind, and all the weeds, and everything blows right in our property. Where the other houses around town, most of them have trees, other buildings around, they're, they're pretty clean. So I'm just wondering whether there was some sort of a, I guess there's a weed rule in, in the city?
There is.
And, wondering what could be done with it, that's our, our concern.
Right, right. We'll just have to check on the ownership.
Okay.
And see, and see where that went. At one time, it all belonged to guards, but I don't know what the school bought, and what they still own, and that type of thing, we'll just check on it and find out.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, anybody else wanna talk to us? All right, consent agenda, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, August 1st, 2017, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, August 1st, 2017, executive session, approval of the minutes, August 15th, 2017, Finance Committee meeting, approval of the Finance Committee recommendations for August 15th, 2017, approval of the municipal court report for the month of July, 2017, adoption of ordinance number seventeen dash zero one five on second reading, yard sales, and I'll read that ordinance by title only, and ordinance amending title seventeen, zoning, chapter seventeen point two zero, accessory uses, section seventeen point two zero point zero four zero, home occupation, adding seventeen point two zero point zero four zero A-11, and adding section seventeen point two zero point zero five zero, garage yard sales and signs of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date. And the last item on the consent agenda is an open container permit for Haley Anderson for a baby shower at Sunset Park on September 7th, 2nd, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Thank you. Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Recommendations from the Finance Committee for bills to be paid in the amount of ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty-one cents, manual checks in the amount of eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, payroll and liability for eight four of seventeen, in the amount of two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-four dollars and seventeen cents, for a total of four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand two-hundred-and-ninety dollars and thirty-three cents.
Thank you, is there anything else? Mr. Cody?
Your Honor, I'd like to, I don't know if it's pull the ordinance for further discussion, or not, not include it in the consent agenda, so that we can discuss it.
Okay, I'd like to discuss that tonight, all right? We can pull that off.
Is that an amendment? I would second his.
Is that yours, Bill?
Okay, moved and seconded to pull ordinance seventeen dashes zero one five off the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's, so we've pulled that off, entertain a motion to approve consent.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda with the amendment.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes, okay, so let's talk about ordinance seventeen dash. Isn't that what we did?
Yeah, we just did.
Okay.
With the amendment.
With the amendment.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
We moved.
Okay, so let's talk about ordinance seventeen dash zero one five. We just read the, by title only, so we probably don't need to do that again, right? Okay?
So, several things that I have, I'm not sure if anyone here in the public is, is interested in speaking, maybe I'll ask that first, before I dive in. Is there anyone here that'd be interested in speaking regarding the ordinance? Okay. I wanted to give the public an opportunity first, but there, unfortunately, I peruse social media, and stalk a little bit, and have been concerned with the number of comments regarding this, and overall, I believe there's a lot of misunderstanding about this ordinance, misinterpretations, and I'm not sure, I mean, I've heard everything from, this is a taxing issue, to this interferes with free enterprise, or people just trying to earn extra money, or how or who is going to enforce it, and what probably bothers me, I think those are all legitimate questions, certainly, I have them, so I certainly think that's normal for the public to have them, but, the public is unwilling to step forward formally and, and address those issues. They love to get on social media, and complain, and complain, and complain, but there are no members of the public here to address those issues. I still think it's important for us to consider those concerns, even though they reside in social media, and to just clearly identify the motivations, or restate our motivations for this ordinance, to clearly understand that it's not a taxing issue, it's not an attempt to interfere with free enterprise, and we have a police department and other ordinances that they're fully capable of enforcing, just like this one, so I don't see those as, as prohibitive issues. So, I wanted to start with that, I guess, more than anything, and I have one suggestion for a wording change, because I believe there's something that still doesn't quite read to me, or so I wanted to, to kick that around. Section one, eleven, when I still read that, and I, it says, "A garage sale that does not exceed three consecutive days, or a total of three days per calendar year," I'm omitting the, the, the strikeout, "shall not be considered a home occupation." A total of three days per calendar year seems confusing to me with the previous statement of a garage sale that does not exceed three consecutive days. I brought, kinda brought this up, I'm having to do the math, and I think the simpler way, perhaps, is just to, to change three days in this, in, for a total of three days, to a total of three sales, which would kind of match up with the concept that you can have three sales, a maximum of three days. So I think it may have just been a, I don't know if that's a, hopefully a small wordsmith, or anybody doesn't have any other major changes, but I'm, that's my suggestion, is that it should read, "A garage sale that does not exceed three consecutive days, or a total of three sales, per calendar year, shall not be considered a home occupation."
Okay, so you're offering that as an amendment?
I am.
Thank you.
Or, yes, I am.
I don't know if that quite gets us there still, because then it would be three days consecutive, or three sales. If we were wanting this to be consistent with what we have below, we'd have to change it even a little bit more, wouldn't we? I, I get exactly what you're saying, and when we talked about it before, I think we just kinda glossed over that part.
Right.
But I would think that we would want to have section one and section two be consistent with each other.
Correct, and I do think there's some inconsistencies there, is where I was attempting to try to resolve as simply as possible, but perhaps it needs a more wholesale modification. Is it, is it impossible to just restate, and is there a need for eleven, if A exists? Can, or can we just restate A in section one? Like, do you have to have, you know, hereby added to read as follows, and then is hereby created to read as follows? Can we just do it one time, instead of having to repeat it twice?
Sandy, can you address that?
Yes, if, if this is too confusing to you, we can just strike that one out. The reason it was put in there was to just clarify, because this is going in the home occupation section of our code, and so all we were doing at that point in time, we, again, we took it from another municipality, we were just clarifying that if you had garage sales, you know, at your house, it was not considered a home occupation, as long as they maintained no more than three. And so that was the reason for putting it in there, so somebody didn't come in and think they had to get a home occupation permit to do a, a yard sale. And our, our whole idea on this thing is not to stifle people in doing a yard sale, we just, the, the main reason for this was to keep from perpetual yard sales, that was the problem, and we had nothing that could control that. We aren't, we aren't giving a permit for a yard sale, yard sales can continue just as they are, you just can't do more than three in a year, according to this ordinance, if it passes. That's all we're doing. When it comes to monitoring, monitoring them, or anything to that nature, we're not gonna go out and make sure that you're only doing a certain number of sales. All we're going to do is, when we notice or get a complaint, that someone is continually doing a yard sale, either every week for, you know, all summer long, or every day, that type of thing, in a residential area, then those are the ones that we will go look at. Just the simple yard sales that everybody's doing right now, they'll just continue just the way they are. There's nothing different that we're changing on that.
Tim?
Two things, so I, I guess, number one is just to clarify, this would be basically then code enforcement, same as we do now, if we see, if we get reported to us, anything such as, as we already do, if we've got.
Weeds?
Debris in a home, you know, in a yard, then they will deal with it the way they deal with it, it'd be the same thing with the garage sales. We're not talking about sending the yard sale police out, it's something where we would be responding to complaints from neighbors, that there have been perpetual garage sales by their neighbor.
That is correct.
And the second thing is, is I think maybe the way we could get there, because I still think what you're wanting to do here with clarifying that this is not a home occupation that would require a permit or anything, maybe what we could just do is say, a garage sale, consistent with seventeen dot twenty dot zero five zero, shall not be considered a home occupation. Then we just completely adopt that in section one, and make it simple.
Perfect.
I like it.
I'd make that amendment. I'd move that we make that amendment.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, so then Lance's amendment dies for lack of a second, we'll take this one, okay? And we do have a second on that, is there any further discussion? Give Sandy just a minute to write.
Yeah, exactly. Repeat that, please.
Garage sale, consistent with, and I guess we'd wanna say Municipal Code seventeen dot twenty dot zero five zero, shall not be considered a home occupation. Because then we're saying all of it, the amount, the.
Signage.
Signage.
All of that.
Perfect.
Got it, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and so, we have now amended ordinance, proposed ordinance seventeen dash zero one five on second reading. The next item on the agenda is, public hearing and consideration of new bar and grill liquor license for the Spur Steakhouse and Saloon. Could we have?
Question, do we need to vote, to have a vote on the second reading? We just really voted on the amendment? Or am I not thinking?
That was my understanding, we were just voting on the amendment.
Yeah, I think we still need to vote on approving it on.
Okay.
And I would move so for.
Okay.
Seconded.
And seconded, okay, I'm sorry, I kinda put those together in my head. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we approve ordinance seventeen dash, what is it?
Oh, one five.
Seventeen dash zero one five on second reading, as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. So we made sure we did that, okay, good. All right, so, public hearing and consideration of new bar and grill liquor license, Spur Steakhouse, city clerks report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, the city clerk's office has received a bar grill liquor license application from Spur Steakhouse and Saloon, for a building located at fourteen oh nine West Main Street. The liquor commission has certified the application as complete, and the proper fees have been paid, and proper notices to the public has been advertised, our force staff is recommending approval of the bar and grill liquor license for Spur Steakhouse and Saloon.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I declare that the public hearing is open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council, to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this?
Your Honor, seeing as somebody's come forward, I recommend that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the liquor license application.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the liquor license application.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and motion passes. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance seventeen dashes zero one six on first reading, Title thirteen revision, interim city administrator's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, as I stated in, in the staff report, we constantly review our municipal code, and we found a section, we were reviewing, Riverton Volunteer Fire Department agreement that hasn't been reviewed since nineteen ninety-seven, we found that in the code, it also refers to the city paying for utilities for volunteer firemen, and I believe that might be in conflict with the state's. And I believe that might be in conflict with the state statute, but we would like to have that removed from the code, since we have not, I am not aware of any time in the last 11 years that we have ever paid for utilities for firemen or their widows. And most importantly in this section, though, we have this big, huge table that was established in 1993, and every year we've changed the calculations and computations of how we arrive at our utility bills for wastewater. Back in 2016, that was changed in the water section, but not in the wastewater section. So we would like those two sections to mirror each other. We would like to remove this table from 1993, because right now, the only thing we have to show customer is an outdated code. And so what we currently do is if they have a, if they want to know what our charges are, we show them the resolution set by city council. So we'd simply like to remove that table and then change the wording and delete the wording in there about Riverton Volunteer Fire Department volunteers receiving utilities from the general fund.
Okay. Would the city clerk please read ordinance 17 dash 016 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Ordinance number 17 dash 016 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.20 Sewer Service System, to repeal and replace Section 13.20.340, collection fees and charges, rates generally, of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the public hearing is now closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 17 dash 016 on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance 17 dash 016 on first reading.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Tim?
Your Honor, I was just looking at this, and it has, effective rates will be published on the city website. I would think it would make sense, just in the interest of transparency, I just was curious, and I was like, can I find the rates on the website? And I was unable to do so. I think it might make sense to have a direct, the link to exactly, not link, I mean, theoretically, I guess, on the website, you could click on it and go straight to it, but could we just have a, the direct address that would lead right to the rates in the ordinance? I think it'd be helpful and transparent for the customers and everything.
What if that changed?
That would change, possibly, though.
Yeah, and we'd have to change the...
And it'd take three readings to change the code.
Hmm.
Pardon me? It is. If you go out to the city of Riverton website, up at the top, there's a link that says I want to, and then you drop down to establish a utility service, and the rate should be published out there. Let me see if I can find it.
Mike?
And again, I think it would be adequate to say that we're going to put them on the website and/or have them available at the city. I think that's adequate, you know, notice, I guess, if that's what it's called.
So, Your Honor?
Go ahead.
You can simply go into departments as well, and administrative services under utility billing, and it has water rates, sewer rates, published. Maybe we could put something on our front page that would be helpful and more transparent to lead people to that area.
I think that might be the challenge, is that we have to dig down through the tree in order to get to it, whereas if we had a, one button to push that said sewer rates...
Right. Be happy to look at that and let you know what we come up with.
Good, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Approval of volunteer Riverton Volunteer Fire Department Agreement, sitter, the interim city administrator's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, again, this agreement was brought to us because it's a rather old agreement from 1997. We made a few changes. Mainly, this came about because it stated in this agreement that the city was shall pay $6.25 per month for each active member for their pension. Well, the legislative changes have been made, and now we pay $7.50. So having a figure like that in this agreement was not transparent, is what we were really doing. So we changed that not to a number, but a percentage. So we simply changed the agreement to reflect that we would pay 50% per month for each active member with the volunteer fire department. We also removed the clause that said we would pay for their utilities. And we complied with other things, like the city will make sure that we have designated the fire hydrants, and that if we receive any complaints from the firemen, that we'll address those fire hydrants immediately, and things like that. So we believe that this agreement is solid. Corey Higgs, with the fire chief with the department, has reviewed this and signed off on it and sees no problems, so we're simply asking for your approval to adopt this agreement with Riverton Volunteer Fire Department.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the agreement with the Riverton Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
Who was that? You? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mayor votes aye. The AIP 44 Project Award Airport Runway Signage and Lighting, city administrator's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor, the city periodically has inspections conducted by the FAA, and one of those inspections revealed that our signage and lighting associated with runway 119, taxiway D, have reached the end of their useful life. We applied for a grant with the FAA and the state of Wyoming for this, and we did receive a grant. The most surprising thing about this is we thought, we budgeted $244,000 for this. The city's portion of that would be 2.75%, most of it 93.75% is the FAA, and then the state has a contribution amount of 3.75%. So if you think about $244,000, that's about $10,000 to the city of Riverton. Our bids came in surprisingly low. We wish that every bid would come in like this. We received three bids, Electrical Excellence for $99,900, Core Enterprises for $102,500, and Pro Electrical Contractors for $113,700. City staff, JAviation, the FAA have reviewed the bids for responsiveness, and they all agree that their recommendation that the city council were the project to electrical excellence in the amount of $99,900, which means it's $2,497 to the city of Riverton.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we award the AIP 44 Project Award to Electrical Excellence.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion.
Did the bid, or the bidding, the specifications and bid documents, were those reviewed and approved by the FAA as well before this was bid out?
Yes. In fact, we thought that maybe there was an error, and something was omitted in the bid, because it came in so surprisingly low, but then they all bid so close, and they thoroughly checked out the bid proposals.
Good. Thrifty. Wouldn't it be fun if North Federal came in like that? Wouldn't that be exciting, instead of $14 million, came in around, came in around seven? Or six?
And our share is only $2,000.
Yeah, and our share was $2,000, yeah. Oh, wow, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay, public hearing and consideration of ordinance 17 dash 018, first reading, Title 2 revision. Could we have the interim city administrator's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor, this is simply my recommendation to become more transparent about one of the functions and one of the most major important functions of the city is finance. We currently in our code have the city clerk listed as 2.12 in the section of administration. Under that 2.12, it lists the city clerk also has the responsibility of treasurer duties. We have not done that and performed that function with that one position in 11 years that I know of. I can refer back to Gloria Ledbetter, prior to me coming here, tried to perform both of those functions, and it was just a nightmare. So I am recommending that we simply remove the treasurer duties out of the city clerk code of 2.12, take that same language and put it in its own code of 2.13. It was interesting, because I wanted to know where this came about, and I even looked at state statutes. State statutes don't even refer to treasurers, they refer to budget officers. Well, I didn't want to call someone a budget officer, because they do more than that in the city. So I started looking at the records from 1905, and as a side note in my staff report, as you can remember, the city clerk position was established in 1906. It was abolished in 1920, because they put all the city clerk duties and the finance duties under town manager. Wiped out those positions. In 1946, they reestablished city clerk. And amendments to this code, the city clerk portion has been, have been offered in 1960, 1999, and 2005. So you can see that there's really not much action that happens in this code. What I'm referring to when I talk about much action is those duties will never change. We will always need a finance officer, a budget officer, we will always need someone that is the custodian of those public funds, and I would like to make sure that that is very transparent with the public. It does not come under the city clerk, it comes under the finance director position with the city. By the way, did you know that the city administrator position is not a new position? It was established in 1957. I was one year old.
And who'd have thought, to this day, that it would be where you are?
Do you remember that, then?
How do you not say anything?
Your Honor, I would move for opening a public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we open a public hearing. Is there any discussion on that? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare a public hearing to be opened. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record.
Seeing none, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 17 dash 018 on first reading.
Your Honor.
Oh, you want to read it?
Title, please.
Okay.
Proposed ordinance number 17 dash 018 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 2 Administration and Personnel, to repeal and replace Chapter 2.12 City Clerk, and establish Chapter 2.13 Finance Director of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, and providing for an effective date.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance 17 018 on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt this ordinance on first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Discussion, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. Mike?
I have a, just a question regarding 2.12.050. It says, "Appointment, the city clerk may appoint a deputy city clerk or clerks as needed." And I guess, I'm wondering if that is what we're trying to do, or do we want the city administrator to appoint additional city deputy clerks? And the same thing would apply down on the finance director.
Your Honor?
I didn't know if that was the proper way that we were trying to do it.
No, Your Honor, that is not, does not come under, really, the authority of the city administrator. That comes under the authority of the city clerk. It's just like our finance clerks come under finance director. So I don't believe we want deputy clerks appointed by the mayor or city administrator because of their supervisory responsibilities.
Yeah, I understand, I just thought the city administrator was responsible for hiring everybody that worked for the city.
No.
Okay.
Well, they delegate that.
Or I guess, maybe hiring is a different thing than appointing them to a position.
Yes.
That's, I guess that's what I'm, I guess, that's where I was off, and what I'm thinking.
So is it just an internal appointment, or is it bringing somebody because of a Russian or a certain time of the year?
It's not even really an appointment.
Okay, so we're reading way too much into it?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I need to hear.
We may have to change our wording on that.
Okay.
The point is, we don't have any deputy city clerks.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we do. Who do we, okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, thanks.
So there's a difference between being hired to work for the city of Riverton and being appointed a position within the city, those are two separate things?
Yes.
And that's what we're talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to have the ability to perform those functions in the event that the city clerk is gone, or the finance director is gone.
Right, so we get a notice that when you're out of town, you say, "I appoint X person to be..."
Acting.
Acting interim city administrator while I'm gone?
Yes.
Kind of a situation?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I, so I have a question about, it says here in the beginning, in the summary, that we're going to repeal and replace Chapter 2.12 City Clerk and establish Chapter 2.13, and yet down below, we still have 2.12 City Clerk, appointment, term of office, duties in general, a few things, a few strikeouts. Replace the director of administrative services in a place or two. Okay, but we still have, we still have 2.12 as a section.
Yes.
But up above, we said we're going to repeal that.
And replace, Your Honor. It says repeal and replace.
So are you trying to say that they need to be more specific on what the 2.12 point, whatever?
No, I think it's an amendment. We're going to amend 2.12 and create a new section. Because if we repealed it, we wouldn't have 2.12 left. We instead would just say 2.12 is repealed on such and such a day.
I see. I see what you're saying.
So I'm just not, maybe I'm being...
Just same, sort of, right?
Too picky and don't want this meeting to get over with before 8:00. with before 8:00.
Well, I think, though, what we're doing is we're repealing and replacing 2.12.040. We're completely getting rid of the ex officio treasurer, and we're making that ex officio human resources director. So, I think maybe the, all that needs to be changed is we have to make clear, which by the way, there is a typo in the title. It says "administration" instead of "Administration and Personnel." We're repealing and replacing 2.12.040. We're
Could be said that we're just amending 2.12.
Right.
That would be the simplest way to say it, probably.
All right. We're amending 2.12, but we're completely, I mean, it is correct to say we're repealing and replacing 2.12.040. Just a couple of issues in the title. If we're going to make changes to the title, do we have to make a motion to amend it if we're changing the title?
No.
Okay.
No, I think so.
Your honor, would you prefer amending or revising?
Either that or I, I just need to get my head wrapped around it. If that's, if that's the correct language, then that's fine, but I just.
Would you be comfortable with revising Chapter 2.12 and establishing Chapter 2.13?
I would be comfortable with that.
Okay.
Yeah, that would work, right?
Does that need a motion, or?
No.
We were just saying that if it's a title change, we don't need.
Just a title change won't be part of the actual ordinance. Okay, all right. Any other discussion?
I have one other question. It's broader than that. Okay, so we have, I assume state statute calls out a city treasurer, for example?
No.
Or resources? So, why are we doing all this? Okay, they're the ex officio treasurer and human resources and whatever. Can't we just say the city clerk is responsible for human resources? Or, it means the same, so I don't think it's worth spending a lot of time on, but I didn't know if we statutorily had to specifically name some of these specific positions, or?
No, we do not. City clerk is a position that has to be established and named, but not HR, not a finance director, as long as you know who the budget officer is. But I think, again, that it's important to put in writing what our practice is.
Right.
Yes.
So, there really isn't a, there really isn't a duty statutory position of treasurer for municipality?
No, budget officer.
Budget officer, okay.
Bayless County and State.
Does anybody remember who made the motion?
I think I did, your honor.
On seconded it?
Mr. Bailey.
I think it was me.
Mike? Okay, it was moved and seconded. Now, we're ready to vote, I guess. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Ms. Gibbon, you got anything for us tonight?
The only thing that I have to report on is that we had the rec board meeting on August 7th, and we just paid bills.
Just paid.
That was it. It was super fast, easy meeting.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
No, just a reminder. Eclipse is right around the corner. Just encouraging everybody to get out and be prepared, you know, and then be friendly. I've seen a lot of stuff. I don't follow a lot of social media about the stuff that people complain about because if they really were that worried about it, they'd be here, but I do see some of the stuff. The ranger did a pretty good job of helping out, but just make sure that we're prepared and we're trying to be proactive about this. So, we just kind of lessen this little bit of hindrance. We're not telling the city people that they have to let anybody from out of town go in front of them in line or to gas stations. Just be friendly, be prepared, and Tuesday it'll be over.
Yeah, this time, this time next week, we'll all be, we'll all be happy campers, maybe. Okay, maybe we'll still have, maybe we'll have a few guys left over. Still trying to figure out how to get out of town. Okay, thank you. You know, I appreciate your taking the lead on that and running that committee and being part of that all the time. Did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Mike?
Again, I attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting, and again, they've been very focused on the Eclipse events and all the different things that are going on in the city. And again, I think there's going to be no lack of activities to participate in if you want to do something this coming weekend. Again, they're going to have their Five and Alive on the 16th and the 20th, so there'll be bands in the park and all that kind of stuff. So, lots of fun things to do, and of course, the Dark in the Park on Saturday, and, again, I still had a person come up and talk to me, I think it was Thursday or Friday, and said, "I don't know if the city is prepared." And I said, "We're as prepared as we can be because we've spent a lot of time and energy doing it, and I think, I think we've done everything we can do to prepare for the event, being unknown in quantity, and so, looking forward to it."
Thank you. Mr. Hancock?
So, I don't know if a lot of people know this, but my son TJ is diabetic type one, and so we had an opportunity to go to a camp that CWC puts on. They, it's through a grant. They did it last, they did it just last week. It's through the Outdoor Education Program. And we are up at Sinks Canyon. Michael Creek over at CWC, Cheek, yes, thank you. We just always called him Michael, so he didn't need to know the last name. Anyway, he heads that up, and it's an amazing program. We had a really good time with our kids, and I just wanted to say just how much it means to me that CWC is willing to do that every year, and I just really appreciated their time and everything that everybody put into that. And it really makes a difference for families out there that have diabetic kids, and just to be able to have a way that you can get together with other families and kind of talk about the challenges that you have and get to spend some time in the outdoors. So, I really appreciate Central Wyoming College for doing that.
Mr. Cody?
I'm not sure if probably everybody here and in the listening audiences had an opportunity to see the Eclipse guide that the Windover Visitors Council and others have produced. If you haven't had a chance to read it, it's incredible, and I really wanted to comment on that. The amount of time and energy and cost it probably took to put that together, I'm sure it was not an easy thing to do, but it's, it's an exceptional piece of, of information and marketing and business, and I just, I was very, very impressed by it. So, I know they come out often, but this special one was exceptional. So, definitely wanted to pass along my kudos to everybody that's gotten that, put that together, so. That's all I have.
City administrator?
Yes, your honor. I have several items. One is, thank you very much for reading the weekly report. I've often wondered.
You got to preface that statement. Courtney, you forgot to put the attachment on it. I'll go and tell your story.
I did forget the attachment, and I sent it out at 5:12. I received a text from, "This is Watson at 5:15. You forgot to attach the report." And then I started looking at the emails, starting at 5:18. I had a councilperson say, "You didn't attach the report." Three more followed until 5:42. So, thank you very much for reading the weekly report. Appreciate that, and thank you for your responsiveness on that. A reminder is, if you're helping this weekend, I think it may be beneficial to wear your name badges, and we are offering safety vests for those who are not in uniform. So, we ordered about 30 of those. If you'd like one of those to be identified, wear your badge on top of that, that would be great. We'd be happy to have you do that. In response to Councilman Larson last week, or two weeks ago, about a debriefing meeting, we are ready to hit the send button on that to our employees for August 29th, but I thought we really need some elected officials there. You may hear a lot of comments or, or our successes or near successes, and we'd like to make sure that we do have representation from the council. If we do have that meeting, August 29th at 11:30, provide lunch and a debrief with employees, whoever would like to attend, and see what we did well. Anyone interested?
Could we find a different day?
Yes.
Because I know the governor's going to be here presenting something at Rotary that day.
Oh, is that a Tuesday?
So, that interferes a little bit.
Okay. Why do you always have to be so difficult?
She's Mike Bailey.
Why can't you just say that would work awesome? That is one day out of that entire week that works.
6:00 AM would be nice.
No, don't do that. Do you like August 31st, Thursday?
That would work just fine.
Can you too? You can't do Thursdays.
Thursdays are bad for me.
Or do it Tuesday evening, or whatever.
Well, we got city employees that are going to be here. We can't get them out here.
If you could do.
29th.
Thursday, I could make Thursday work as long as it's not between 11 to 1.
How about if we just do the 29th, and if you can make it, great.
If we changed it to a breakfast brunch, would that be helpful?
It was earlier.
Yes.
Okay, the, the deal with the governor's going to start at 11:30 and run through 1, and so if it was earlier, 9, 9:30, something like that, then we'd be able to do it. Or, if it was at 1 o'clock in the afternoon and we ran.
Okay.
Tuesday would work.
7:00 AM would work good for me.
7:00 AM would work good for me.
That'd be breakfast.
And that would just be breakfast. Wouldn't be breakfast brunch.
We're all going to be friends, huh? Tuesday works. I can make a, or Thursday work. I can make any day. I'll be there.
I think it's important that we try to get Councilman Peterson there, and.
You just, you just pick a date and I will be there. I promise. You pick a date and a time and send me an invitation. I'll be there.
We arrange the time, 29th, and let's do 9:30. Can we do that?
Yes, I can do that.
All right.
I'm flexible. Any day that we, I can make it happen.
Okay. So, I have three announcements. One is that Mrs. Sandy Lores is retiring effective September 30th. It's going to be a bittersweet moment for the city of Riverton. She has dedicated a good portion of her life to being a public servant, serving as an elected official, and then in that same amount of time, I think it was her two or three month turnaround, Sandy, that she came to work for the city of Riverton, and she's been here approximately eight years. Almost nine. Nine. So, it will be a bittersweet moment for the city, and we certainly wish her well. You'll be hearing more from what's happening in that department, but she's already begun a transition plan with her department. So, we have cross-training going on and, and getting people in places, and she's sharing a lot of her knowledge and expertise, and we really appreciate the work that she's doing to help us make that transition and make it smooth for this, for the city as well as, as for the employees. Secondly, Courtney and Kyle Butterfield are the proud parents of a baby girl, Sarah Rose. I think that was Saturday, and I did allow him two days off. And the last one, mayor, is our IT guy who is filming this tonight. It's his birthday today. I thought maybe you might want to wave hi and tell Mr. Tim, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Tim.
Thank you. That's all I have.
We'll spare you the singing.
I know during our meeting that we had with Kyle last Friday, there was a number of city employees who have stepped up to help. Do you have a total number of the city employees that have stepped up to help out throughout the Eclipse?
Every city employee has volunteered time, and every city employee is working through the weekend and Monday.
I thought that was awesome to hear that. I thought they need to be recognized. So, that's, that's great that everybody's stepping up to do their part. So, that's, that's really neat to hear. This sacrifice and leading from the front. So, I don't think anybody should have anything to say because all the city employees are going to be out there in front, pulling the rope.
Thank you, thank you. And, and to kind of continue with the Eclipse theme, I, any time you write a letter to the editor and he prints it, then you're going to get some feedback. And so, I guess my, my letter that, that asks people to kind of clean up a little bit and make Riverton look spiffy so that our visitors, I got a pretty good list of people who have failed to accomplish that to their neighbor's satisfaction. So, but I did want to comment, I did want to comment that I have noticed a number of properties in Riverton that have been pretty trashy and pretty weedy, look very clean right now. And so, people did go out and do that kind of stuff. If, if code enforcement had a hand in that, hooray, thank you very much. I can only think of a couple of messes, and, and I'm sure that there's an effort underway to try to deal with that, but sometimes folks are just not as responsive as, as they could be. So, we've still got a few days before we get a bunch of guests in town, and so there's an opportunity to clean up a couple of places yet, make, make Riverton look like it's a place we're proud to live in. And, and so, and part of that is, we got a little press in the paper with city crews cleaning up flower beds, and, and then take note in the next couple of days. I think Jerry Kinsler and the Downtowners are going to put up some flags on Main Street, so there'll be some, some decoration on, on Main Street for the three days of the Eclipse, and so they're going to be doing that and manage to put that together with donated materials and labor. And so, I think Main Street is going to look really dressed up and spiffy, and, and I think that'll be nice. So, we're grateful for anybody that comes to town this weekend. We hope the sun shines and that the smoke goes away, and, but we have no guarantees to. And so, I heard today that the long-range forecast for Riverton is up for grabs, but they've kind of downgraded the possibility of good, clear skies in Casper and Jackson. I don't know what that means. It may mean that the guys that have got hotel rooms in Casper and Jackson will just not get as good a show as they'd hoped for, or it may mean that they'll abandon that and come charging over the mountain or across the prairie to come to Riverton and see if they can get a better, better look at things. So, I don't think we have an executive session tonight, do we, for any reason? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are done at 8:03.